Recording has started.
Got it. Good evening, I'm now calling the Tuesday, October 18th, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners to Order. Time is 7:01 PM. Please note that in accordance with Government Code Section 54953 Subsections E3, this meeting is being held by teleconference only. Because we are video conferencing, we will follow a strict protocol for the benefit of the recording. I will indicate when commissioners, staff, presenters, and the public will provide comments. If you've called into the meeting and are not using a webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comment for the benefit of the recording. And for everyone, please practice considerate video conferencing etiquette by muting your line when you're not speaking and limiting distracted behavior on camera. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Commissioners, I will be conducting all roll calls this evening in the same order. Please remember the order so that you are prepared to provide your comment or vote. President Spring?
Here.
Vice President Sherlock?
Here.
Commissioner Vasigi?
Here.
Commissioner Tonka? Commissioner Tyson?
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
We have six commissioners present. Excuse me, for the benefit of the recording, I will also conduct a presenters, consultants, and staff roll call. Fire Chief Kirkow.
Here, present.
Thank you. Strategic Planning Consultant Scott.
Here, good evening.
Thank you. Fector and Company Representative German.
Yes, here.
Thank you. Saddle Mountain Neighborhood Firewise Project Lead Anderson.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Eaton and Associates Associate President Eaton. Okay. We have Eaton and Associates MSP Account Manager Source. DUDAC Environmental Principal Project Director O'Brien. DUDAC Environmental Forester and Fire Protection Planner Eckhart. LEHCFD Engineering Consultant Tarantino. Community Education and Risk Reduction Manager Blueham.
Present.
But someone finally, yay! Programs Planning and Cost Manager Rendler.
Present.
Thank you. Emergency Services Manager BD.
Present.
Technical Analyst/Project Manager Cronin.
Present.
Thank you. Budget Manager Morale.
Present, good evening.
Rest it up, I'm more Ray up.
Morey up.
Thank you. Events Coordinator and Firewise Coach Klein.
Here.
General Manager Logan.
Here.
Deputy County Counsel Forbach.
Here, thank you.
Thank you. And presenters, consultants, and staff are accounted for.
Phew, okay, thank you District Clerk Vargas. Moving on to item two, which is the Commission President's remarks. Well, from the length of that last little bit, to give everyone a clue that tonight, we have a lot of material coming forth. A lot of reports on an incredible wide breadth of topics. With a lot of guests who are timing their appearances to match the agenda in some cases. And we'll probably have a lot of different screen sharing, and we know that brings technical risks, so we ask everyone's patience and attention for an evening where, to use the obvious metaphor, we're gonna be drinking from a fire hose tonight. Lots of stuff coming. So, I don't want to waste any time because we do have a lot of material. I will call attention to one thing, though, and this is actually just stealing something from the General Manager's report to point out for for those of the audience who only dial in to hear me speak and then they cut out. The earthquake shout-out, shakeout, earthquake shakeout is this Thursday, 10:20 at 10:20 AM. You'll see there's a slide information kind of the General Manager's report, but this is a huge nationwide, if not worldwide, effort to bring attention to emergency response of earthquake activity. And they're literally, if you look at their website, millions of people will be doing events at this time to address preparedness for earthquake emergency. So, just wanted to point that out for everyone, and you'll hear about it later. That's all I have. With that, let's move on to a very full agenda. Okay, moving on to item three, public comment. Persons wishing to address the Commission on any subject not on the agenda may do so now. Please note, however, the Commission is not able to undertake extended discussion or action tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on the next available agenda. District policies to limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker unless the number of speakers requires me, the Commission President, to impose shorter time limits. Do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda? I'm not seeing any hands. Seeing, hearing none. We will move on to item four, the consent calendar and changes to the order of the agenda. Are there any comments from staff on any of these items?
Um, yes, President Spring, I'd like to comment on item, excuse me, 4G. The resolution for the amending the Conflict of Interest Code, that's okay. And, so, I just sent that out to commissioners and posted to the public this afternoon, so I'm sorry for the lateness in getting that to you. And just to review that item real quick, since a lot of you might not have had a chance to. So, the Political Reform Act requires each public agency in California, including the district, to adopt a Conflict of Interest Code. The Fair Political Practices Commission requires incorporation of agency-specific designated positions and disclosure categories. Individuals holding it as the nated position make or participate in the making of decisions that may foreseeably have a material effect on any financial interest of the position holder. And these individuals must file the annual Form 700 Statement of Economic Interest. Tonight's resolution amends the district's Conflict of Interest Code to add the newly created position, Community Education and Risk Reduction Manager, and the Budget Manager. Denise Gluhan, she was already the ESM with us, and her disclosure category from the one position to the other does not change, so she is not required to file another Form 700. The Budget Manager, Russ, will be required to file the Form 700 with Disclosure Category 3. And that requires disclosure of investments, business positions, incomes from sources related to, utilized by, and within the district. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, thank you for bringing the information on that item. Are there any questions, any other staff comments? Seeing none. Any questions from the Commission on any of these items, or any commissioners like to make changes to the consent calendar or the order of the agenda? Not seeing any. I would now entertain a motion, and will the Commissioner making the motion and the Commissioner seconding the motion, please state your names for the benefit of the recording.
Warren moves.
Great.
Sherlock seconds.
Perfect, thank you. The item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the Commission? Not expecting any, not seeing any. Okay, is there any public comment on any of these items? Not seeing any. Seeing none. If there's no further discussion, we will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Spring?
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Vasigi?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Great, thank you. We will now move on to item five, which is the presentation and approval of the draft audited annual financial report for the fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2022. Let's see, and item 5A is the presentation of the draft audited annual financial report by the Financial Audit Representative of Fector and Company. Budget Manager Morial, please introduce this item for us.
Yes, good evening, President Spring and members of the Commission. It's a pleasure to introduce the Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Annual Financial Report for the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. This reporting is for the year ending June 30th, 2022, and is typically finalized this time of year. As I recently joined the agency, let me first say that the positive results that you'll hear about tonight of this financial report has everything to do with the diligent work put in by Cory Vargas in ensuring the accuracy and completeness of the accounting for the year's transaction. It's an honor and a partner with her, and we will tag team tonight in the presentation. In tonight's presentation, there's some specific purposes. First of all, I am simply introducing the district's independent auditor to present the draft of the annual financial report. Following the auditor's presentation, Cory will provide an executive summary. In essence, providing financial highlights. She's gonna blend the organizational activities into the numbers that you will see tonight. And this will be followed by commission and public comment. In terms of our recommendation into tonight's staff report, the recommendations before you are as follows. Firstly, approve the draft of the Fiscal Year 21-22 Audited Financial Report. Provide comments. Direct staff to submit this report to the county in final form on or before October 19th, 2022, which happens to be tomorrow. The AFR, which we call it, the Financial Report, will return at the November 15th, 2022 meeting of the Regular Commission, simply for final publishing. A preliminary draft has been provided to the county for their informational purposes and administrative purposes. Lastly, as the Commission reviews this important financial report, let me take a moment just to highlight the key elements of its content. There are seven key sections of the report, starting with the auditor's opinion and ending with the report on internal controls. Section one, the auditor's opinion, is exactly what it sounds like. It is the auditor's attestation to the accuracy and reasonableness of the financial report, and Scott will speak to that. Section two is very important for the public to read, and anyone reading this report is essentially a transmittal letter which describes the organizational and key elements of the financial report. Section three is government-wide financial statements, and section four are funds-based financial statements. I bring this to your attention because the section four fund financial statements are those statements that are prepared on a basis that most closely resembles the cash-based budgetary type of accounting that you normally see in a budget. So, four is, three is a privatized type of presentation of a private accounting, and four really resembles the budget. So, it really makes sense in comparing that to the budget. Number five are notes to the financial statements, which illustrates some key elements behind the numbers. And then number six, section six, is budget-to-actual reports, which shows the Commission and the public how we fared relative to the budget. And lastly, there's an auditor's opinion and report on internal control. With that, I am pleased to introduce Scott German of Fector and Company to provide their presentation of their report. This is Fector's first year of engagement with the district, and he is available directly to you for any questions or comments you may have. And I want to thank Scott for helping us get past the finish line in this presentation. And with that, I give you Scott German.
Thank you, and can you see the screen? Yes?
Yes, I can see.
Yes. Yeah, I've been worried, I wasn't even being heard. Thanks for having me, and let's get started. First, we'll start out with some required communications that we're supposed to talk with the board about. We want to tell you what an audit is and reinforce that our work is to test and look at on a sample basis the transactions and whatnot in the financial statements. Ours is not to redo the staff's work for the entire year. So, don't expect that an audit tests everything. We want to point out that management is responsible for the fair and accurate financial reporting and establishing the systems and policies necessary to achieve that goal. Management and Commission have the full responsibility for the financial statement presentation accuracy. Like Russ said, the opinion is the only part that's really us. Management's responsibilities include selection of the appropriate accounting policies, financial statement presentation and accuracy, and implementation of the system of internal controls. The accounting policies that the Commission has approved are summarized in Note 2. Note 1 just kind of provides an overview of what the district is. Some of the policies are standard for special districts, basis of presentation, measurement focus, when the property taxes are levied, and then various equity classifications. Some are specific to the district. In this case, really, the only one that's real specific is the capital asset capitalization and depreciation policies. Our responsibilities, we're responsible for forming an opinion based on our testing and work with the financial reports that are provided to us. And remember, an audit only provides reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance, on the accuracy of the financial statements. Having us do an audit doesn't relieve management and the Commission of their responsibilities. So, always keep that in mind, we're part of the system, but it doesn't relieve anybody there of their responsibilities. For the more communications difficulties, corrected misstatements, and disagreements with management, none of any of those. We do record adjustments, but those adjustments are mechanical to get between the two bases, the fund basis and the government-wide basis. So, we don't really classify those as misstatements. Again, consultations of the accountants, other findings or issues and other matters of note that we've needed to point out, and nothing there. Our part of the financial report, and the only thing that I get to change willy-nilly, is the independent auditor's report. It is a clean opinion. It's a new format this year, so any of you folks that are on different boards will be seeing this format, which basically moves the opinion first, which used to be down at the bottom, and then it's followed by discussion of what our responsibilities are, our respective responsibilities are, and goes on to explain our opinion on the other, or what other information is covered. Some real quick overview items, net position on the government-wide statements, which the government-wide statements include all of the long-term assets and liabilities. So, this is the one that's most like, say, General Motors. Net position is 35 million, cash investments represent 95% of that, very solid. And then net capital assets are the other 5%. There's some little liabilities there, but really nothing significant. Statement of activity shows the components of the net change, a change in net position. Public protection expenditures were $9.6 million. General revenues are 13 million, primarily property taxes. Some other, which is primarily in the investment income. Which leads to a net increase, a net increase in net position of $4.3 million. So, very solid performance. The fund statements, we have a fund balance with, so basically the difference here is we pull out the net long-term assets, which in this case, fixed assets. So, we have a general fund balance of $33 million, just slightly smaller because of that small decrease. Of that, 58% has been assigned, or is unassigned, rather. And then 14 million or 42% has been assigned to the various projects that the Commission has decided on. In between, there is a reconciliation that shows you what the items are, and you'll see it's fixed assets and depreciation expense on the income statement. The notes, there's really nothing in there that's of note, sorry for that pun. The details of fixed assets and other items are in there, it explains more of the balance sheet and income statement items, gives you the details of the assumptions that we used. Budget versus actual, revenues were over budget, that's good, by 570,000. Expenses were under budget by 3.4 million. I think there'll be more on that in the staff report. Again, good direction, which means net income was over budget by $4 million, and over budget and net income is a good number. Therefore, the increase in fund balance of $4.43 million. Control and compliance issues, you know, this was a very easy audit because the controls were in place. Information provided to us by staff was well put together. We had no real problems there. And, you know, just like to thank you for having us, and it was really a pleasure working with you and your staff. If there's any questions, I can take those now.
Thank you, Mr. German, and Budget Manager Morial. Is there any discussion from the Commission? Seeing no, I will make a comment that I also want to repeat what the Budget Manager said, that this really reflects Cory's work, and I think we should all take a moment to really appreciate that the work it takes to get an auditor to say such nice, clean things about us comes from the efforts that she's done all year, budgeting and operations as well, so certainly my thanks go to her. And any other comments from Commission? I see a lot of clapping hands. Seeing no more, is there any public comment on this item? I got to scroll down the list of our very long attendance listed to check that. Okay. Seeing none, we'll now move on to item 5B, which is the approval of the draft audited annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. Financial Consultant Vargas, please present this report.
Yes. Hold on to me, get my share screen up. First, before I delve into our slides, I do want to point out, there are two typographical errors on the draft report. That, so, if you approve this draft financial audit tonight, these will need to be changed for the final, and that's on page four. There's a typographical, this should be 4,363, 361. And then on page five, the percentage there should be actually 18%, so that the other percentages all add up to 100. And those are the two typographical revisions that I would recommend the Commission approve tonight, unless, you know, they have others of their own, which we will hear from after my report. So, I'm just going to go over some of the operational highlights of the year, which you can also, I think this will delve nicely into the budget for the upcoming year, which we will delve into slightly during item 14A later in the meeting, but, you know, we had quite a good year of, you know, services, we purchased that water tender, we started the collaboration with City of Palo Alto and County Fire for Station 8. We, as you saw last month, were making revisions to rush shipping program. We had the evacuation routes along Almonte Moody Road, and we had talks with Burn Preserve Open Space. Next slide, we started development of SEQA, SEQA compliance and grants, thanks to Eugene, Eugenia, I'm sorry, not Eugene. And, of course, we brought in all the new specialized consultants, GSI mapping, the IT services, the technology that Jackson provides for us. And this is during the last fiscal year, hired Operations Manager and the full-time General Analyst Programs Planning Grants Manager. So, whoops, excuse me. There we go. So then, just the financial highlights is that fiscal year '22, it did result in a positive increase in fund balance. And no capital assets acquisitions or dispositions occurred during the year. The budget expenditure limitations were met, and revenues exceeded estimates by 4%. And this positive outcome is considered in budgetary reporting to benefit the community as the district navigates and plans for the future. And that is the end of my report, and Russ, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add?
No, no, just a really good, positive outcome and observance of the budget which the Commission put forward this past year. Thank you, Cory.
Great, yeah, thank you, Financial Consultant Vargas. The recommended action tonight is to approve the draft of the audited fiscal year 2021-2022 Annual Financial Report with the two typographical revisions as noted by staff, and to direct staff to submit it to the County Controller Treasurer Department on or before tomorrow, October 19th. Are there any clarifying questions from the Commission? See, look around, not seeing any hands up. Not hearing anything, okay. Let's see, are there any public comments on this item?
See, yeah, Alan?
See, want to know, Alan, you have the floor? Alan, are you, is your mic on?
Yes, it is, but the screen jumps around quite considerably when it, when the public gets an opportunity to speak, so you have to move quickly. Anyways, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. On page 32, there's a percentage that's missing, I think, at the very end of the document on page 32, there's a comparison. Bear with me one second. It's is the percent over or under budget for the net change in fund balance, and the percentage is missing. And the percentage should be 996%, I believe. And on page 12, I just want to point out that the comparison on page 12, when it talks about the economic factors, compares the budget for next year to the budget for last year, as opposed to comparing the budget for next year to the actual results. That may be what the what the district intended, but the percentage changes are quite different depending upon which process you adopt. And then lastly, I'd like to say that the explanation for the huge favorable variance is not totally representative of the fact that there's quite a substantial difference between the budgeted figures and the actual figures, which in my opinion aren't totally explained by the document that's been provided. So, thanks very much for the opportunity for the comments, excellent job on the document, excellent results, and my compliments to Cory as well, thank you.
Great, thank you for those comments, Alan, we appreciate them. Any other comments from the public? Again, scrolling up and down this long list of attendees, seeing none. Let's see, I will now entertain a motion. I need a motion in a second from the Commission.
Tyson moves to approve. One second.
Great, thank you. We have Tyson and Vaughn. The item is now open for discussion, any discussion from the Commission? Pretty solid, great, thank you. Let's see, I guess, any, I see. Any public comments on this? Nope, seeing none, and there's no further discussion, let's vote. Cory?
President Spring?
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Vasigi?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson? George, you might be muted.
You're muted, George.
Sorry about that, no, I know, my space part wasn't on space, all right, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Great, the motion passes six to zero with one absent, and I just wanted to say thank you to Scott German for joining us.
Thank you very much for everyone there. We will now move on to item six, a presentation by the Saddle Mountain Firewise USA Community. Programs Planning and Grant Manager Rendler, could you please introduce this item for us?
Evening, everyone. I'm happy to introduce the Steering Committee, pardon me, the core team of our Saddle Mountain Neighborhood Firewise Community. They're the first one in Los Altos Hills, and we're excited to hear about their process. The core team consists of Anne Smith, Martin, Martha Bowden, Michael Grady, and Drew Anderson as their project lead. Anne, Martha, and Michael were always available at the ready to support the initial evacuation drill, all the paperwork development, and the Zoom meetings during the COVID challenge. all the paperwork development, and the Zoom meetings during COVID challenges, and recruit more neighbors for participation. They also made themselves available to participate in the Saddle Mountain Neighborhood Firewise Mission Moment video and scripts and films, which you've seen in prior meetings. They championed the work with the neighbors who needed more information on fire hardening efforts and the cost analysis forums, which are part of the process. And coming up in future steps, Anne will continue to focus on the communication drafts in the database. And Martha and Mike will continue the street championship of getting more neighbors involved. Drew will be able to tell us about the outline for their next activities and we're happy to hear from them, starting with Drew.
Okay. Can you hear me? I'm not, can you hear me?
Yep. Yes.
I see George with a thumb up, so I think that's the good news. Okay. Well, I'm, I'm not going to go in all the detail because I guess there's a little bit of a time limit which can, can affect this, but I really want to thank Jay Logan and her whole team for all the support they've given us. Being the first one through the shoot, we had a few bumps in the road, but we all lived through it quite nicely and it got the job done. COVID got kind of in there and interrupted us a little bit and we started with an evacuation. But unfortunately, we got delayed, so we couldn't count that. So anyway, thank you to the, the team and to the Fire Safe Council and the Sheriff's Department who helped us with our evacuation initially and and our, my core team and Martha and Michael, who are just super people and I really appreciate them. We've got, I think if you can go to the next slide. This is our area. It's Zone, Zone Haven, E L A H E dash zero five. The blue area, we were originally working on the whole zone. The blue areas was our next step. The white area is the part that's been approved, the Saddle Mountain of community. And includes Moon Lane, the access, which is syrup. There's one house on Arastodaro and then Saddle Mountain Drive, including the private road extension. And of course, Saddle Court, where a couple of us are on Saddle Court. The majority of us are 35-year-plus residents. Mike is, you know, a new kid on the block. He's only been here close to 20 years. So we're very familiar with some of the issues of the neighborhood. If you could go to the next slide, please. Hang on. So I won't go through all of this, but if you've been out there, you know, there's this one two-lane access from Arastodaro syrupway. And the, the street isn't really super wide, but it is two-lane. And then it dead ends on this private one. And so I think one of the, one of our principal issues is we've got 40-some homes up just in this zone and we really need a good clarity on zone egress. Yeah, because there's a lot of misconceptions about the role of Moon Lane. It's actually a fire equipment access road in the private extension of Saddle Mountain Drive. Ends on Fran Thompson, I think it's Fran Thompson Lane, which is a pathway that goes out to Elena, but it just really doesn't have a traffic pattern for it. So those, that's one of our principal issues. If you could go to the next slide, please. Okay, our initial focus is has been on, on just getting, getting things underway. We, there's a lot of understanding of paperwork in this process. And I think now that we've been through the shoot once, I, I think that, you know, any further Firewise communities, you can hire us at zero salary to provide, you know, hints and, and suggestions for doing that. The first year, we're going to focus on building our awareness, continue to build awareness. Thanks Eugenia and the, the team, why they sent out a nice mailer to the entire zone. I just arrived this week and I've already had at least one response. That was early today saying, here's my address. I want to be involved. And that must be the Ballarat Ranch area, which would be part of our next year's focus, but it's good to get, to get going on that. Priority wise is just really getting an understanding of safe egress and evacuation planning. So that'd be one of the things we're going to be focusing on this year. You know, and then we don't need to give a report until a year from November, but we're going to be working diligently during the course of that. An introductory invitation letter regarding Firewise was mailed out. Like I said, from, with Eugenia and the staff's help and just, just arrived yesterday's mail. Next slide, please. Actually, before I get to that, I wanted to just touch on a couple of the other things that we were going to plan during the year is that the key task is just educate, continue to educate residents about our project and list their support, investigate emergency notification systems, initiate development, emergency evacuation plan. Work on getting four-inch reflector address numbers for everybody. Identify areas with access challenge for emergency vehicles, which would be that private road for one. And continue to educate residents in all their activities as far as their home is concerned. One example of how we kind of help one another is if you look at this picture, it's my land on the left. My son and, and a couple of vendors and, you know, there were like about three or four 50-foot trees there. Mostly trunk. And, and then my neighbor has quite a few pines on the right. And so what, what I did was just with some help, just created a kind of break, break between my property and my neighbor's property. And then continuing just this past weekend, I worked with her to do some more getting rid of dead stuff and, you know, helping her out. So I think all of us in, on the core team and others in the neighborhood are just really willing to put shoulder to the wheel. And you can see that if you're familiar with the lipal pines, they had two or three that were mostly trunks, so they didn't really give much privacy. The next slide, please. So this is, some years ago, there used to be a hot tub, but I redesigned our deck. And so now it's a waterfall with lots of wildlife that comes to, to share coffee with me at various times of the day. But that's an example. If you look out, that's Black Mountain over there. You can see there's just a lot of foliage and a lot of that I thinned out, you know, with help. And so that's what a lot of the neighbors who've been involved are doing. We initially had about, I think it was around 12 or 15 households, you know, that filled out and, and documented what they were doing. And of those, about seven of them actually did a cost report. So we've had a pretty good participation. As you all know, we're west of the freeway and it's a wildland urban interface, so we, so we, we, the insurance companies, my insurance company, for example, had canceled me just for the heck of it. And, and then I reminded them that I've been with them for 50 years and then maybe they ought to reconsider. So the owner of the agency actually, or the, oh, the local office actually came out. I told her, wear flat shoes and she walked the property. And, and they got very impressed with what we're doing for Firewise, so I got reinstated. So that's the good news on that. And then the, the next picture shows. Hang on. Things are falling off my desk. The next picture shows looking out from my family room window and that's the top of Moon Lane over there. Moon Lane's part of our district, our zone. And then sunset on Moon Lane, but that's included. As you can see, a sort of characteristic, there's fields. This used to be a ranch years ago. Actually rode horses on it with my four-month-old son before it was ever developed. So that goes back a ways. And then on the right is looking out the other direction. Again, Moon Lane's and in the foreground, you can kind of make it out. And toward, we actually have a view all the way up to the Portualla Valley area. But you can see it's largely fields. Every year we're required to, you know, mow or mow, well, we've been mowing the fields. And so we have about two acres. My neighbor has two acres. And one of the other things is I, I also kind of have organized for the last several years the mowing, so it's more cost-effective. And I get a hold of the mower. He comes in, mows it, and it's all done by the deadline. So that's that project. And then as Eugenia mentioned, you'll see there's a news release that I was prepared, that was prepared a couple of weeks ago and sent out. I don't remember exactly what it was sent to, but this is all very much something that the four of us and the whole neighborhood has really appreciated. The support from the Fire District and from the town of Los Altos Hills and the Sheriff's Department when we had our evacuation. So I guess bottom line, folks, thanks so much.
Thank you, Drew. And is there any discussion? Oh, I see a hand up from Jim.
Yeah, I, I'm a resident of the LAH E double O five, so I feel compelled to make some comments about this. Somewhere along the way, long after the start of, the start of this initiative, Drew reached out to many of the residents of the, the area that he showed, that she showed on the map to be the blue. I'm one of those in, my court is one of those areas. And so I, I decided to join in in terms of as a witness that if nothing else, so I watched a lot of late stage work that was going on. And I was very impressed with the neighborhood's work as well as the involvement of the, the staff, Los Altos Hills Fire District staff and the Santa Clara County Fire Safe staff. It was really quite wonderful to watch it. So my, my sincere thanks goes to all of those people. Again, as a resident, as a commissioner. And I also really have a sincere hope that this, the next phase of the, the project being involved, the courts that I'm a part of, the blue areas and the courts in, in, in my neighborhood are parts of, because I think this is really very sad to get to know your neighbor, make the neighborhood safe. That's, you know, that's, this is a huge, huge protection, protective, protection measure for our neighborhood regardless of what else happens. So moreover, I'd like to see this whole fire state initiative expand to other zone havens throughout the city. Because again, that's when, when the, the big bad wildfire happens and God forbid it encroaches into our town, this is, this would be a one, one surefire measure in addition to everything that the, the district is doing. So thank you very much. And the staff and this Santa Clara County.
Great. Thank you for those comments. Any other Commissioner comments?
Hi.
Yes, Joan.
Look has a comment. Drew, I just want to thank you for your leadership. This wouldn't have all come together without you hanging in there and pulling on it and making it, you know, when it got tough, you stuck with it and you really made it happen. And I think that's, it's, it's wonderful to see the beginning of these Firewise communities happening. And without somebody taking the lead, it wouldn't. So thank you.
Well, thank you for saying that. I appreciate it.
Right. Any other Commissioners? You know, I'll say that this is not just a model for the town, but a model for all the regional areas around us, bringing neighbors together. So this is worth taking notice of and I hope we will publicize this and, and spread what you're doing. And I hope as we get other little neighborhoods interested, we can get some of you in there and really help spread what you've done. So this is really a key thing for, for us as a district and really us as a region. Great. Any other, is there any public comments? Give her a chance. Not seeing any. In that case, we appreciate, thank you. Oh, wait, I see a comment from Eugenia. Sorry.
I just wanted to expand on the point of what Drew mentioned. It's going to be published, the article and the photos along with website links, more information and access to, you know, our team that supports it in the December issue of the, our town. So we are going to put this out one more time with many ways to get more information and get started on your own.
Great. Jay?
Yes, and I'd like to echo and thank the core team around Drew. As we say, it takes a village and here it takes a town to support a worthy effort. And thank you to all of those residents who are on the phone tonight, came in, met with us, hear the wonderful things happening with the district. Thank you, thank you, thank you for supporting Drew and our efforts to build Firewise USA Communities. Thank you.
I see Martha, let's, let's bring her in.
Yes, too.
Hi, I'm on the Executive Board of the Local Council of the Boy Scouts. And we have three camps, two in Santa Cruz County and one in the High Sierras. We lost an entire camp in Santa Cruz County in 2021. We sustainably log all of our camps with the approval of Forest Service. We, we own the lease for the Forest Service. The Forest Service owns the land. We own the lease for the buildings. And we log those camps with the approval of the Forest Service. It's, it's a federal Forest Service. You're only as good as your neighbors make you. And two of our camps survived the forest, one up in the High Sierras with the creek fire. The two camps on either side of us were burned to the ground. We sustained, we suffered some damage, but not major. It was mainly infrastructure, electrical, water sewage, which we're still working to repair. Of the two camps in Santa Cruz County, one was in a hot zone. Even though we, we logged that camp, we couldn't, it, it wasn't saved. We lost every structure in that camp. And it will take us years to rebuild. This is a real danger to all of us. And I, I wish that the people in Los Altos Hills and Los Altos and San Mateo County really understood this because we live in a fire zone. And we have to learn to live in a fire zone and it's not going to get any better without our help. So I have a definite interest in trying to spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Appreciate that. Denise?
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. I just really want to give credit where credit's due. This Steering Committee for Saddle Mountain has been amazing. Drew, thank you for spearheading all of this. This is a grassroots effort, remember. This is the residents helping each other to do exactly what Martha's talking about. And you can see the educational component that's happened, the awareness that's happened to the citizens. And that's the major goal that we set out with is to self-empower those residents to be part of the solution for what we've defined as a wildfire problem. And they've gone out and they've done that. Yes, they have goals for the next three and, and years on, and it's a starting point. And I just really want to, you know, again, the hard work that went into this, the learning that happened, Drew, some of her eye-opening epiphany moments, I was just, my heart was just full of joy to, to, you know, see the, you know, because my first questions, you know, three, four years ago, whenever I started here was, can we have the key to Moon Lane to leave? You know, and just understanding now that that's, you know, that's a fire ingress, you know, to help fight because of the one-way road where everybody's leaving out. So again, just that knowledge coming full circle. Really appreciate that. I want to acknowledge everyone in the group. Thank you.
Great comments. Victoria?
I'm going to kind of echo what Denise said and also thank, I got the pleasure of, of assisting Denise with this, this Firewise group. And I can't tell you how motivated and hardworking they are. And it was just such a privilege. And I just want to say thank you to them and to Denise. And, you know, hopefully in the future, we'll have some more of these to share with you guys. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for all these wonderful comments. I mean, this just is a small indicator of all the work left to be done through this town, but I'm glad to have it. It's such a great spark to get things going, or the pun. Okay, in that case, we will now move on to item seven, which is the Santa Clara County Fire Chief Report. Item seven A is the monthly report for September and seven B is the Palo Alto Fire Station Eight monthly report for September. Fire Chief Kerkau, could you please provide these reports for us?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. And again, I will echo what I've just heard, the good work. I think this month's report is going to illuminate, if you will, some of the challenges that we had. Cory, I could not share my screen. So let me know when I get a thumbs up.
One second. Yes.
Sure. So basically.
Okay, you should be able to.
Thank you. So I'm going to start with the actual, instead of the. So I'm going to start with the actual instead of the cover page, just kind of showing everyone where we're at for September of twenty twenty two. And basically call volume, as mentioned last month, is back to where it's at. But the biggest thing of note here is you had a dollar loss of only fifteen thousand dollars. But the reason why I'm jumping right down to the dollar loss is that we had a third alarm brush fire that was in the district specifically along Highway two eighty when we were listening to it from headquarters, basically, reporting parties didn't put it accurately where it was. And that's the challenge. Some people on freeway are traveling, they don't know if they're going northbound, southbound, et cetera. And then once we got on scene, access was an issue in terms of just grade access roads nearby, et cetera. So going back up to the top, there was one significant event. It's the event that you see there vegetation fire, three alarm vegetation fire. No damage to structures. They did call for structured defense early on. And again, it's one of the things that we do to make sure that we're as far ahead of the curve as we possibly can be, given the conditions on that day or on the day. But damage was done to artificial turf irrigation and one of multiple shrubbery with an estimated property damage of fifteen thousand dollars. When I look at, and again, one of the tools that we use is in Terra. It helps us to kind of take a look at just the perimeter itself and the units and the response. You had responses that were from your mutual aid partners, Mountain View, Palo Alto, et cetera. And of course, a large response from county fires. So what we were able to do is make a stop forward progress stop fairly early on. And some of that was just crews getting on scene first. But when you do have that vegetation that's brushed back, pulled back, thinned out, it just gives us time. And sometimes that's that that makes all the difference is the time that we just need to get our feet on the ground and run in toward the fire and putting a perimeter around it. So getting back to the report itself, with that being the good news that there was only fifteen thousand dollars in property damage with that incident, you do see up here engine seventy two has two one rural, one urban with a fairly long response time. That is those incidents, both of them were on the day of that fire as well. So the challenge was as we as we do move ups and as we move resources toward the district to backfill and to be in both Los Altos and Los Altos Hills. The freeway traffic was just snarled. So that's what was going on with those two incidents. But everything else in the report is in alignment with what we typically see for the hills, nothing unusual there. And the percentages still drop down to where they are. And I can tell you from traveling on Highway two eighty myself that everything seems to be pre-COVID as well as the incident count. So here's your overall map of the incident, this white here, this red dot along two eighty is where the incident was for the fire and that third alarm brush fire, but everything else was fairly spread out throughout the district. And that is the September report for Los Altos Hills, the district.
Great. Thank you very much. Any discussion from the commission? I see Commissioner Warren.
Yeah, thank you, chief. Has a cause been determined on that brush fire on two eighty yet? Is it still under investigation?
I'm looking at the report here and it is in terms of in Terra, there was no cause identified on that report. I can go back and take a look. See if they've found a definitive cause. If I remember correctly, I thought it was something that had to do with a vehicle, but I'll have to go back and confirm that.
Thank you. Great. Any other commissioner comments? Let me remind everybody to please mute your please mute your Zoom window if you're not one of the active speakers. I see a few iPads and monitors that have their microphone on. So then we get to echo sometimes. Thank you. Great. Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, not seeing any. Great. Thank you. So we'll move on to, oh, I'm do we just said item seven B? I'm sorry.
So this is item seven B and this is the report for station eight. We did change the format somewhat. And that's because we're going to start doing an aggregate, if you will. I did make an error in last month's report, meaning for the month of August, I had mentioned that Palo Alto state staff that that was not Palo Alto, it was ours. That was just a mistake speaking on that item that last month for September. Hold on, let me make sure I got this right. So right now Palo Alto Fire is staffing station eight. So this report is for last month in which county fire staffed station eight. And for that, there were a total of fourteen responses from that station for the month of which nine were EMS, three were service calls, one was vehicle accident and one canceled upon arrival. So overall, what we're doing for station eight is both we went into conversation with Palo Alto Fire and we looked at it ourselves with the forecasted weather. We are going to, hold on one second, let me make sure there was nothing else on that report before I move forward. There is basically rain projected for next week and then rain a few days afterwards. We already see this basically inland layer giving us humidity recovery. There is not a huge fire risk as we kind of close out October. And per the contract, the parties agree that we will conclude as of October thirty first staffing station eight. Again, the forecasted weather conditions indicate just a lower fire risk, but if anything changes with regard to the weather, then we have the ability to go ahead and upstaff either mode one staffing or again, work with the hills and determine if we need to restaff station eight. Because again, the contract allows us to go through November fifteenth as needed. With that said, next month I will have an aggregate report for station eight for the last two years to present to the commission. Any other, any questions regarding this?
Looking for any commissioners? No, great. That's very interesting. Thank you so much. Okay, any public comment on the station eight report? I see one hand up. Alan, yeah, Alan, you have a floor. But and if any questions, please direct them to me and we'll decide how to sort of deal with those questions to the public.
Sure. Thanks very much, Roger. So my question is you changed the report and it does no longer indicate whether the responses are in the fire district or in Palo Alto. I think it's of interest to know whether the responses are in the district or within Palo Alto. Also, I had some questions last month which the minutes say that you you would be answering. I would appreciate receiving the answers to those questions if I could. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you for comments. I know that some questions are being dealt with offline and good comment about the where where the various incidents occur. Seeing any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I guess we will move on. Thank you, Fire Chief. See, when I move on to item eight, the general manager report. General Manager Logan, could you please present this for us?
Ah, yes, thank you. Corey, could I screen share, please? Or if you would like to screen share for me?
Your your co-host now.
Thank you.
Would you like me to screen share for you?
I think that would be a good idea. Lost my report on my desktop. Thank you. There we go. Okay, thank you, Corey. That's wonderful. Okay. Thank you, President Spring. The title page of this report is reminder of earthquake readiness day. And then to the left, there's the photo of the site that Chief Gerkau just mentioned, the vegetation fire on I two eighty and Magdalena Road. And next slide, please. Slide two, the first part talks about a town hall webinar last week that provided remarks from State Department of Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara, who sponsored regulations to require insurance carriers to acknowledge vegetation reduction efforts within their communities. These vegetation mitigation efforts may result in retention or lower premiums for homeowner fire insurance with their carriers. Today I was watching Channel Channel Two News and they are carrying the story of these regulations that will help homeowners engage in vegetation mitigation to maintain their insurance. And this, these regulations are gaining momentum throughout the state. Los Altos Hills County Fire District and Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council back in two thousand twenty, Jenny and I represented there met, addressed these issues to Insurance Commissioner Lara during a meeting within the county. Expansion of the district's integrated hazardous fuel reduction programs are key to helping residents present to their insurance carrier the rationale for firewise and fire mitigated communities. Drew Anderson gave us testimony tonight as how she leveraged the firewise community and her property hygiene to to reinstate her fire insurance. So the link to this webinar is on page on that slide too. I hope you take a look at it. Slide three offers the photo and comments about vegetation mitigate about the recent vegetation fire on Magdalena. And then also remarks that the county PIO monthly meeting, which we attended through the two years of COVID are now not no longer monthly, but are but as needed with major events, emergency, and if there's a county EOC activation. Slide four just highlights the October twentieth at ten twenty AM observation with an international shakeout day that encourages and recognizes drills for earthquake events. November fifth, Altamont Road evacuation project site tour will demonstrate to the community the vegetation safety features now in place with the removal of roadside vegetation, limbing of trees, removal of trash and brush and improvements to the environment along Altamont Road. This is another way out for hundreds of Los Altos here's residents. Again, another testimony to insurance carriers as to what the district is doing to make safe residents, homeowners, and hopefully lower insurance rates and risk for the homeowners. Thank you. That's the end of my general manager report.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Not seeing any. Great.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I too attended the the fire and property insurance town hall hosted by Senator Josh Becker. And which built up on the prior webinar that was conducted by Commissioner Ricardo Lara. Either Commissioner Carter, as as General Manager Logan mentioned, spoke very very strongly about the the insurance initiative underway to try to more or less regulate and improve the insurance situation. And I was very much on the same page as Drew was because my insurance nearly got canceled as well. And there was no, there's no explanation made. And had it not been for the precisely the reason she mentioned, namely my agent speaking on my behalf and coming here and taking pictures of our hardening efforts and 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 the rest of it. We would have, we would have been, you know, in essentially a lot of trouble with the insurance. So they are, they're taking initiative, they're taking liberty with people's insurances. And I'm very glad that ultimately they're going to be accountable to 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 the insurance commissioner and this whole thing is hopefully going to get better. But the second point I like to note again, as General Manager Logan mentioned, all of our programs in the in the in the in our district is, you know, more or less to speak to the exactly where they're going with the with this initiative. Namely, the the H I Z, the chipping, evacuation route, zone heaven, education and outreach, all of it. All these programs are very, very important, not only to save residents' homes and and lives and all the rest of it, but also to help them get some reward for the effort they put in to get their insurances reduced or not canceled, at the very least not canceled. Thank you.
Great, great comments, Jim. Appreciate that. Any other comments? Any public comment on that report? Seeing none. Thank you. We'll now now move on to item nine, report on information technology managed services. General Manager Logan, could you please introduce this report for us?
Ah, yes, thank you, President Spring. The district engaged in the county's request for proposal procurement process with the assistance of county council and county technical IT services to find a managed service provider to help us run our IT program. The team wrote the RFP or the Request for Proposal. We interviewed IT firms. We selected Eaton and Associates based upon their high quality of their application, their interviews and their references. We entered into an agreement for services and we commenced implementation of IT services for the district in June of twenty twenty two. After these initial four months, it's now timely to provide the commission with a report on the very high level of success, impact of deliverables and enthusiastic collaboration that the district has with Eaton and Associates on all things related to district IT. I would like to introduce President of Eaton and Associates, Mr. John Eaton and Ms. Katie Soros, who is the managed service provider account manager, who is our point of contact. Mr. Eaton, if you are available, I'd like to turn the discussion over to you and then to Ms. Soros. I haven't.
Thank you very much.
Good. Hi. Thank you. Hello. It's all yours.
Katie, did you want to bring up our presentation?
Yes, absolutely. I can go ahead and get that started. Thank you so much, Jay, for that introduction. It seems I cannot share my screen.
You should be able to now.
There we go.
Thank you. That looks a little better.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Jay. Thank you, John. Hello, everyone. Look me today like they said. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, you're good.
Wonderful. With me, like I said, was John Eaton. It's very exciting for us to be welcomed to this meeting to discuss some of the work that we have done with the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. As we go through the slides, we will cover the three S's, stability, scalability and service. But before I show you the goods, I will pass it over to John to give a bit of background on E and A.
Thank you, Katie. And I just want to say that we're very, very excited and happy to be working with with the Los Altos Hills Community Fire Department. And that our relationship has gotten off to a great start. I think that we we think alike and are really working well together. As a brief background on our company, my wife Patricia and I started the company in nineteen eighty nine. So we've been in business for about thirty three years. We do a lot with nonprofits and governments and education. We work with a lot of towns and government type agencies up and down the peninsula. So we're familiar with the needs and and the process of working with organizations such as yours. I think one of the things that we're excited about is because we do work with a large diverse group of of clients, we're able to bring some best practices to the organization that perhaps is is new and it's hard to grow internally with bringing on your own staff. So again, I think that we're very happy and excited to be working with you. Jay and Sarah have all been great. And I think Katie, just to keep everything on time, why don't I hand it back to you?
All right. Thank you, John, for that background. I apologize. I have not used Teams or Zoom in a while. I've been used to Teams. All right. So the first S in the lineup we have is stability. Our team is able to fully support the needs of the district. However, should the organization continue to grow, E and A has the ability to scale up the team. Currently, the Eaton and Associates team that is working with the district is myself, Katie Sores, account manager, Dion Nelson, our help desk manager, and Mohamed Shalabi, our CTO, as well as our twelve technical engineers. All right, our second S is scalability. We are able to fully support the technical needs of our clients, as I mentioned in the last slide, in which we welcome constructive conversations to enhance our partnership. And of course, we'll adjust services if necessary to the situation at hand. All right, our service, the third S, as a managed service provider, we offer Help Desk and Network Operations Services, Procurement Services, Cyber Security Resources and Assessment, Document Creation and Reporting. This may be anything from our service metrics to company policies and processes. All right, here you'll see our priority levels with our service tickets. The priority levels of our services and the needs of the situation vary from about a level one to a level four. Priority one is classified as urgent, meaning we have multiple users or staff members unable to work due to a technical issue. Priority two, which is considered a high priority, meaning that this, that a single person or a single system is down or a certain function is unavailable to the users. A priority three, which is considered a normal issue, is something such as requesting additional licensing or procurement. And then lastly, priority four would be considered a low priority. An example of a priority four would be something like a scheduled maintenance. All right. Completed items with the district are weekly meetings with L A H C F D have allowed us to move swiftly through all of our action items, leaving room for additional discussions surrounding how we can enhance IT within the district. In parallel with our day-to-day Help Desk Ticket supports, some of the items we have covered so far range from onboarding new users to the district's team, reviewing proposals and making recommendations, creating IT policies and documentation, as well as in-person and remote user device assistance and setup. Additionally, our discussions always conclude with planning next steps, which is very progressive. So some, some up and coming items, as you see here, are implementing a virtual private network, which is a VPN, managing of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District software licensing, procurement of hardware, creating an email retention policy, implementing best practices for users among all of the, all of the software you guys use and the apps that you use and collaborating on the public document portal. All right, here you'll see our metrics for issues and requests from July, from when we began our account to October. Currently, we have not had any priority one issues. So that is wonderful. A goal of Eaton and Associates is to limit the amount of priority one issues through active and preventative maintenance, such as patch updates and scheduled reboots. If I can draw your attention, the graph in the top right corner of the slide displays our ticket inputs inputted per month with a total of twenty-two so far. At E N A, we strive to provide exceptional customer service and support. So we are beyond happy with the customer satisfaction score being a ninety-eight percent with the L A H C F D users. So as I'm sure you guys can imagine, your smiles are our smiles and we really appreciate our partnership and being able to move forward to help support your IT needs. If there are any questions, we are happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments from the commissioners? I will leap in here with one, which is that I don't know if that presentation accurately conveys how much relief comes from me and our staff that these questions can get addressed. Because before then, the resolution plan column would be sending a little Roger, he might know, he might not. And I will, as a credit to Eaton, because you know, every new vendor you always wonder about, it was amazing to me how quickly I was able to completely stop being the IT guy and stuff was taken up so quickly and professionally. And I'd be able to step away from it entirely. And things are just humming, so many projects that have been done that could not have been done before. So my thanks to everyone on the team, especially, I want to say Sarah Henricks, who's been, who is doing all the work of really getting Eaton involved with us and making this work. So it's a huge success from personally, it's been a huge success for me. So I thank everyone who's, everyone who's been involved with that. Any comments? Any comments? Seen any public comment on this? See, Alan has a, has a comment. You have the floor?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for the, for the presentations. It's wonderful to have you guys on board. My interest has been, as it has been in the past, about the public portal and retention and access to historical records, agendas, minutes, resolutions and various reports. I would be very interested in hearing what the plans are for upgrading the ability for the public to have access to those types of documents. Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks for the comment. I think a report of the future about sort of all of our archiving and publication efforts would be a good one to talk about. Thank you. Let's see, moving on to item ten, reporting on the development of the successor strategic plan. Strategic Planning Consultant Scott, could you introduce this report for us?
Yes, thank you, President Spring. Good evening, everyone. The Ad hoc Succession Strategic Plan Subcommittee has been diligently working on the next strategic plan. I can't share my slides, Corey. And we have a short update for you tonight that will be presented by Commissioner Warren, who is the Chair of this Ad hoc Subcommittee. So let me just pull up the slides and I'll hand the microphone over to Commissioner Warren.
Great. Thanks, Marcy. And it's the successor, not succession, strategic plan.
Thank you.
All right. So give a quick update. So as, just to bring everyone up to speed, a little history, a little background of what's been going on. The committee, the Subcommittee that we have going, we met, meeting three was in late September. Meeting four was just last week here in October. I happen to be the Chair, Commissioner Basiji and Commissioner Sherlock make up the balance of the team working on this. So what we've done in the past, the previous meetings, that we shared actually at the last September meeting, was we reviewed the strategic alignment of our entities. We remember if you recall, if you were with us, we showed basically the Venn diagram of the different organizations in which we have relationships and who have vested interest in our strategic roadmap. And we also, at that time, we went over the SWOT analysis and looked at where we have strengths and weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And so as the team moves forward, what we did this month, month in our latest meeting was we took that, you know, the input around our strategic partners and our SWOT analysis. And we looked at that, how do we, how do we turn those into actually long-term strategic plan? And what are the, what are the pillars of that strategic plan? And so the, you know, the previous two-year plan, which was really kind of abridged between the last five-year plan and going through COVID and the audit, we needed a plan to get us to this point. We learned a lot from that. And so, you know, what we've done was we've improved our chipping programs. We have actually started our hardening, our evacuation routes, which are, and we launched a training CERT program. These are, these are examples of some of the community-focused aspects of our previous strategic plan. Then you know, that progress and lessons learned informed our efforts, you know, on strategies and building our strengths for the next, you know, iteration of the strategic plan. And so really, what we're looking to do is strengthen the long-term resilience of the community through programs that support, protect the lives and property and enhance the safety of the community. That includes preparedness, infrastructure enhancements and sustain, sustainability, and make those programs sustainable. And so working through all of that, you know, we are working on actually the draft of the, the plan. And what we're looking at is, you know, what are going to be the, the short and long-term strategies to implement the plan? And then we're looking at what data will be used to inform the goals and the measurement tools to help measure our progress towards those goals. And so, you know, it's a lot. I'm trying to keep it short because we have a long agenda tonight. So next steps, we are, we are, excuse the staff and the Subcommittee are working on plans to host a community input meeting because we want to create an environment in person for engagement and discussion in which the community can participate in input into the strategic plan. You know, I think that we all agree that that is vital to making it a successful strategic plan. You know, it is their fire district. And the date for that and the logistics, the staff is working on that, but that'll be vital as part of the progress. So what we're planning on doing next steps is our next meeting is first week of November. For the Subcommittee, we'll continue to discuss and edit the goals and refine them. And the intent is, is that to bring those draft goals to the Commission meeting in November for review and get input from, obviously, the Commission, the rest of the Commission and community, additional input from the community at that meeting. And as I said, we're planning logistics for that community meeting here in the future. All right. As I said, we'll return next month with the draft. Any questions? Any input?
Any comments? And first of all, there's no action items to be taken here tonight. And I know you guys have been really busy and I can tell from the, all the email talks. So appreciate how really responsible you guys have taken this effort. It's a big one. And thank you all for that. If we, no commissioner comments, we will, any public comments on that? Great. Seeing none. Thank you. Again, thank that team, which still has a lot of work to do. So, and making work for themselves to really do it right. Okay, we will now move on to item eleven. Operations, Emergency Services, CERT and Integrated Hazardous Fuel Reduction Reports. Item eleven A is the CERT report. Emergency Services Manager Beebe will be presenting this report for us. And District Staff and Commissioner Tyson, who attended the Team CERT Academy graduation, I invite your comments.
Excellent. Thank you so much, President Spring. First, before I start, I just, I really want to take the time to say thank you to, to you, President Spring, Vice President Sherlock and the Commissioners, as well as Jay Logan and District Staff for the support of the Team CERT program. I can't, I can't tell you the, the relationships that have been built out of this program. And I also want to thank you for, you know, your support in us as a staff by adding on more great people that you brought on board and shout out to Eaton, they're amazing. They helped me with a lot of tech stuff, that's for sure. I may be part of all those tickets there. That might be a lot of me. But I just want to say thank you also for that, for your support. I'm going to play you something that we are very proud to share. We have created our Team CERT TikTok and we were able to do our first TikTok this weekend. So I'm going to start with that because I'm just really excited about it. So hopefully the share works. It did earlier, but let's, let's try it. Pretty exciting. Okay. And I, I think our biggest excitement was getting Jay to get into that TikTok. At first there was a big no and all of a sudden I'm like, wait, she's on the TikTok. So just want to thank everybody. Let me show my screen here for coming out specially. There we go. Especially to Mayor Tyson, Commissioner Tyson, you've got two names there, to President Spring. We also had Battalion Chief Chris Peady in there as well, who did a little talk, Rescue Seventy-four, as you saw on the TikTok, who are always amazing to work with and who we have such a great relationship. So I just want to say thank you to them. This is kind of a highlight for me is that we have established teen cert clubs now officially and for high schools in the county. I'll talk about that in a little bit. So we did our skills graduation day, as I mentioned, we had twelve graduates that came out. We also had something pretty exciting this time. We were able to partner with the scout troop from the area, Scout B S A troop number four one zero three. They came out and our CERT, Amira Sachdeva was able to come out and do some collage. So we have some pretty cool pictures that Jackson took and some really awesome videos. So we'll be sharing those at the next, the next Commission meeting. Also too, there should be an article hopefully out next week in the town crier. The Scouts had such an amazing time. They asked to come back. They also asked to be teen certs. And then they wanted to write a great article to talk about our, our collaboration. So I'm really looking forward to that too. We are also working, as many of you may know, I'd mentioned before, I chaired the Santa Clara County CERT Program Managers Group. And I also co-chair on the County CERT Leadership Team. And we are going to have a countywide CERT Skills Day on January twenty-first, in which we are going to invite, we've already invited all of the certs in the county. So a lot of the, the events coming up will be centered around me planning for that. We're also planning to do a joint activation drill with the Town of Los Altos Hills. That is coming up in February. So the town and hopefully the Emergency Fairness and Response Committee can also assist with getting us kind of together and doing some planning around that. As far as cert projects go, we still are going to be firming up Starlink thanks to Technical Analyst and Program Manager Cronin, who is taking the lead for me. He is just great with tech. He's come, came from tech. So I gladly handed over that project to him for some procurement and some approval processes. You'll see that hopefully at the next meeting. We are still continuing to work on our disaster operations and simplifying some of our job descriptions for the ARC. Thank you to President Spring, who's, who came out to that event and gave us some really good feedback. We also have just been talking about retrofitting both our ARC as well as our disaster trailers. They are not earthquake safe in some of the ways that we are storing items. So I'm going to be working on a retrofit of those. We're also going to be switching out propane generators, switching our old gas to propane generators. We already did that in the ARC. And we're hoping to retrofit the disaster trailers because they have built-in generators. So we're hoping to kind of switch those out and have some kind of retrofitting of that so we can fit it in and move it around. We have noticed that, you know, the safety is, is something that we need to work on. So that's definitely something coming up. I'm hoping to finalize our G I S mapping of CERT zones in the next month. This is going to assist us with, and I think Commissioner Basiji mentioned it earlier. We have, thanks to you guys bringing on Marjorie Klein. Her and I are working on a firewise educational curriculum that we will be hopefully utilizing certs to start some neighborhood firewise programs. The last thing we're doing is doing our twenty twenty-three calendar of training. I'll be working on that the next month or so, as well as teen certs. Yes, we are focusing on our teen cert club programs. This week, the teen certs are assisting Los Altos High School with their earthquake drill. They will be helping do search and rescue, check, you know, checking classrooms and things like that. So I'm really excited to be able to talk about that at our, our next meeting. That is the end of report for me.
Great. Thank you. Any comments? I will say that the, for those of you who haven't attended some of these things, the amount of energy Victoria has brought to these programs is just incredible. And it's, it's exciting to go to. And the other thing I'll mention is, I showed up expecting to see Victoria and maybe twelve kids. I didn't expect to see dozens of regional partners of all kinds of connections with us there to be part of this thing. It really shows you how both intertwined we are and how significant it is for the various emergency service agencies that are involved with us. So that was really an eye-opener and I really appreciated it. I see Commissioner Tyson has his hand up.
I don't mean to interrupt you, Roger, because I don't have that much additional to say other than I had so much fun. I didn't really think I, I didn't know that I'd have that much fun. And part of it was meeting all the people and part of it was talking about just joint issues. And also just the, the spirit of these, these ten new teams is it's infectious. And also just the, the spirit of these, these ten new, uh, teams is it's infectious. You know, you're affecting their family. We chatted a bit with some parents and what they had learned, what they, what they'd experienced from, from their kids having this experience. I just think, you know, the, the whole thought of community and then the thought of helping others. And again, I'm started early. What a wonderful experience.
Jay?
Yes, I wanted to add on to what you and, and Commissioner Tyson were saying, but I had the experience also of chatting with four different cert teen graduates who were holding their diploma. And I used it as an opportunity to do a little bit of a survey to ask them, what does this, what did this program mean to you? The kinds of things they told me were just kind of jaw dropping from my perspective. Because one, one, uh, certain graduate said, you know, she said, I fell into cert, uh, COVID isolation. And then I found myself in COVID depression. And it was the cert teen, uh, involvement that brought me out of that. And now that I'm out of it, I don't ever want to go back to where I was. And I looked around and three or four of the heads were nodding as she spoke. And I said, did that happen to you too? And they said, yes. And they went on to talk about careers in the medical profession, understanding what balance in life is all about. And how important it is not to let stress take over your life at a very young age, but to find that balance. And I got to tell you, it, in a way, kind of choked me up to hear that what we think we're doing for the teens, how we're enabling them, them to help themselves and form their perspective as young adults that will carry them on to a healthier lifestyle as they mature. I, I was just very, very, I felt very blessed to have that conversation. And I thank Victoria and Denise and all the people who started at the grassroots with teen CERT. Didn't give up, got through it, even though it got hard and arduous. Because when you're doing virtual with minors online, there's a lot of regulations to go with it. So I just thank everyone for their commitment and to the commission for your foresightedness and now to all the regionalization that we're doing to help others learn how they can reach out to their young adults who are our future. So thank you for letting me share those thoughts.
Thank you for those comments. And this remind me that I really failed to mention Denise, the, the, your part in making this what it is as well today. So thank you. Thank you both.
Yes.
Okay, uh, any public comments on this item? Not seeing any. That's great. Um, we will move on to item eleven B, which is the Integrated Hazardous, uh, Fire Reduction Report. Let's see, um, eleven B one is an update. And, and starting with this right, update on the Arastadaro Evacuation Road Hardening Project. Technical Analyst, Project Manager Cronin, uh, this is for you to present the report for us and Captain Gluen will be providing comments as well.
All right. Good evening, President Spring, Vice President Sherlock and Commissioners. This is my first opportunity to, uh, present some, uh, an update for you. Thank you very much. Since you onboarded me with last month, um, I invite you to think of the image of the the Western with the train rolling down the track and the cowboy and the horse running fast, trying to jump on board. Oh, I'm that cowboy. And that train is a, a number of projects that I'm trying to, to catch up with and jump on. This is the eleven B item, Arastadaro Evacuation Road Hardening. To catch up with that train, we had a site tour of the project. We went along Arastadaro Road. We looked at the, uh, the district site or the, the parcel. Uh, gave us a good appreciation of the scope of the work, the importance of where it is, its location. It's, it's critical to access to freeway and the rest of the uh, of the hills and it's a secondary egress there for Page Mill. We also then met, uh, on the seventh with Stanford. That was very important. Um, this project, I think, I feel has so much value because it is a stepping stone for the future projects and bigger projects. We're developing these incredible relationships. In that discussion with Stanford, they accused us of reading their wildland plan because we are so in sync with what they're doing. Um, and we have future, uh, plans to, to work with them on that, um, coming up. In fact, it's in my notes here. We have, uh, done our, our, we've initiated the, uh, the residential outreach for mailers have gone out for right to enter. Those should be coming back soon and then we should, we will be able to, uh, begin doing door knockings to reach out to residents that haven't responded yet. Um, it's, it says on upcoming, it actually happened yesterday, but we've completed all the permits and applications, all the legalese that we needed to, uh, to get this pro, project on the ground. Um, upcoming traffic control, that again is another important meeting where we're collaborating with, uh, our partners. Caltrans, um, of course, Fire Safe Council in the district. Um, I mentioned those right to entries will be coming back on Halloween. And so immediately following that, we're going to get out, get out and start, uh, pressing the flesh and meeting, uh, meeting the residents and seeing, answering their questions and, and getting access as we, as we can. We should be in October, end of October, November, be able to look for contracts and RFPs and work with Fire Safe Council to line up our contractors and we should hopefully start, um, putting brush and chippers in December. That is the end of my report and I'm open for your comments and questions.
Any comments or questions from the commission? Seeing none. Thank you, Ryan, for, uh, you survived your first report with us. We appreciate it. A lot of exciting stuff going on. I'm particularly excited about the work with Stanford to be really generating them as a, a partner for us on major projects is really something, a big step for us. And I'm glad you're involved with that. I see Denise has her hand up. But you're muted.
Let me unmute. Yeah. I just, um, again, thanking, um, Ryan for jumping on board so quickly, um, and really stepping up and doing project management and, and, uh, you know, just what he brings to to this and to the district and, and you've heard GIS, all these other things. He has a lot of skill sets. And I just wanted to mention one other event that didn't get on a slide, but we, um, in a collaboration with the town and the activity guide did a native plant walk at Hidden Villa, which I think was a, again, another great collaboration. And I was, I was speaking with some of the residents. We had a very nice, um, volunteer from the California Native Plant Society, Vivian, who runs their nursery there out at Hidden Villa. And she, uh, assisted, we had uh, ten residents, one of which was Peter Brown, who sits on, um, the Landscape Planning Committee. So very nice to have him attend also. But it was, they were very appreciative, did a lot of discussion around, um, the zero to five feet in landscape design, mulching. Uh, I brought a variety of plants and Vivian also showed a variety of plants to talk a little bit about natives in general. They got to walk around the Hidden Villa, um, plant area that's, that's kind of a natural, uh, plant area there. So they could see what unwatered, uh, natives allowed to kind of do feral and do their own thing look like. So, you know, to give them some ideas, uh, alongside ones that are well irrigated. And I just, I kind of want to bring again, full circle, all of this came out of initially the shaded fuel break, uh, stuff. So these projects that you know, we're starting the two eighties, um, you know, the two eighty, uh, project with the OES and whatnot. They're, you know, giving local small wins, um, in that, you know, here we're collaborating at Hidden Villa. You know, with, uh, residents getting, uh, information that they've asked for a lot. Uh, so it was very fun. I just wanted to put that in because it didn't get into the slide and I just wanted to, um, thank Victoria for setting it all up and, uh, and assisting me. And that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for those additional comments. Um, any public comments on this report? Not seeing any. That's great. We'll move on to item eleven C. Cal OES FEMA hazardous mitigation grant reports. Um, and this will be presented by Programs Planning and Grant Manager Rendler. You could present that for us? Are you muted?
Thank you. Let's see. Here we are. Oh, this is a very exciting time. So the original grant application was, was built and submitted to CalOES in April. April ninth was its due date, you might recall. We have had, we've received the final supporting reports from DUDAC. And they were submitted, reviewed and submitted to CalOES on October eleventh. So we are quickly approaching where CalOES moves, uh, all the sub-applications to FEMA on November first. So we've, we've spent six months meeting all the requirements and the background and the evaluations that we need to move forward. And the next thing that happens is that FEMA takes quite a while to review all these applications. They're a federal agency, obviously, and they get hundreds, if not thousands of these projects. So likely the updates on this will go dark until third quarter next year, possibly fourth quarter next year. They've advised FEMA gives very little information during the process. I've, um, overseen FEMA grant applications before, uh, when I was with Fire Safe. And it's, it's tricky to get any information at all out of them. And in a way, it's good. We don't really want any information out of them because really the only time they reach back to you is when they have additional requests for information. So they do have the opportunity to ask us for future RFIs. We've already processed eight for, for CalOES. But we really don't want to hear from them until Q three next year. So that's the end of this update.
Great. Thank you. So it's really no news is good news. And it's going to be a long bout of no news presumably. Any comments or questions from Commissioners? Great. Thank you. Uh, any public comment on this? No, it's, it's, it's a, it's a huge milestone to be passing that on and, uh, the whole team, Kenno has put tons of work into this for months. Really should be proud of that. And that's an exciting step for us as a district too. I, I, I recognize what it means for us. Okay, um, moving on to the next item, uh, eleven D CWPP reports. This will also be Programs Planning and Grants Manager Rendler's report. Please present that for us.
I think we need C two.
Oh, did I miss one? Uh, oh, I'm sorry. I, I skipped down a little bit. Excuse me. Didn't mean to, uh, Item two is the update, um, on the DUDAC Environmental California, the CEQA Impact Assessment Reports.
Right. So these are related. Um, the, the SEQUA evaluation was for the I two eighty project. And the visual impact assessment was also for the I two eighty project. FEMA requires that you have, um, all of your CEQA in line and ready, uh, at the time an award is made. And so the district has been very proactive in getting this, this all done so that it gets ready to turn in with our application. DUDAC was wonderful to work with. We had a very, uh, crunched timeframe. And as you've heard from Denise, they were out there on the ground in that hundred degree record-setting September week. And they completed the evaluation and the draft of our N O E on time and within budget. And the same goes for the visual impact assessment. FEMA requires that you have all of your, um, collaborators requirements met before they will make an award. So since we're working on the Caltrans interstate, you know, interstate in two eighty, Caltrans requires a visual impact assessment. So we had to have that completed before the application steps up. And again, DUDAC rose to the occasion and completed the visual impact assessment on time and on budget.
Great. And, and really it's the expertise and technology required to pull this stuff together is really incredible. And so the fact that we are able to do that so promptly is very impressive. Any, uh, comments from Commissioners? Okay, any public comments? Okay, thank you very much. Let's see. And now I think moving on to item eleven D, the CWPP reports.
So yes, now we're ready for the CWPP. So on the left, so on the left side of this slide, you'll see the upper left corner. This is a logo that has been recently put together to represent, um, this update. The left side talks about the countywide CWPP update progress. And these are the similar comments that were just presented to the County Fire Chiefs Association on October fifth. So these updates are aligned directly with what all our fire chiefs in the county have been told. The CAL FIRE grant was awarded to the Fire Safe Council. So Fire Safe Council is the project manager with the, um, CAL FIRE funds. And then other, um, groups along the bottom, you can see have contributed other resources like staff time and outreach and things like that. So this has a much more effective and stronger kickoff, if you will, because it's, and, and as happens when you're renewing something, instead of innovating something, people are more interested. Said, and you have more participants already. So that's great. Fire Safe Council hired SWCA Environmental Services as their consultant, their vendor to run the update. So they'll be doing the risk analysis, the new outreach, the mapping, that type of thing. And the team structure that's guiding this process this time is three layers. The management team, which is a small core group, which is the logos that you see at the bottom. Um, and advisory team, which is subject matter experts. And that was invited to an offer to everyone that is, that has an annex or would like to have an annex. So that, there's twenty-six folks on the advisory team so far. Um, and I think that I saw our town manager earlier on our, uh, Hollywood squares. And, and I know they've responded as well. So exciting to have lots more people involved there. And then the last thing that is happening this year so far in the update cycle is all five of the Board of Supervisor districts have, um, agreed to host stakeholder outreach meetings. So those have been set up by the Fire Safe Council and the education and outreach will happen. The, the input, you know, similar to the way we're doing outreach meetings for our strategic plan. They're doing outreach district by district for the countywide CWPP. And this dovetails into annex updates. And we happily have annex four, which is one of our district's three pillars for our programs and our strategic plan. Um, a little bit of history for those of you that haven't been through the whole process. In twenty sixteen, then initially the county produced, county fire produced the CWPP under a CAL FIRE grant. And we were, um, annex four was produced mostly for us, uh, in that process. In twenty nineteen, the commission revised their county and brought it up to date. And they also issued an addendum to go with that update for resident education. So it aligns with goal one in our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three strategic plan that remains consistent, the things that are in the CWPP. You know, with those will be aligned as, as we go through the update process. Sorry. And again, there's our twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven successor strategic plan. So annex four keeps coming up and keeps being, you know, our, our part of, you know, reaching up into the larger countywide guiding and coordinating document. So it is time for us to run our update. The technology has changed a lot since twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. Even twenty nineteen, there's a lot more modeling, fortunately and unfortunately, based on our fire history. And we are stepping into asking DUDAC to help us with task, with their task for in the agreement that we have with them put in June, put in place in June and work on our CWPP annex four update. And that is the end of this update.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments from Commissioners on this? A lot of stuff going on. Okay, great. Any public comments on that? I see Alan has a comment. So, uh, Alan, you, you have the floor?
Thank you. I don't know if my comments are appropriate now or when the DUDAC, uh, uh, contract is talked about. The annexes that were prepared for the, for the district or, um, were very, um, boilerplate in nature and the amendments that were made to it were pretty much just correcting, um, errors from, from this boilerplate that was existed. I'm very much interested in how this CWPP effort will differ from the previous one. Many of the, uh, maps in the CWPP, which showed levels of fire risk really didn't represent, um, the lay of the land. And I know we've supposedly, um, a lot more work has been done since then. We've had this LIDAR work that supposedly been done. So I'm very interested in how much more specific this CWPP will be to the kind of, um, less specific one that exists at, at this point in time. In the previous CWP, there were, there was talk about, um, hold on one second. I'm sorry. Mitigation projects, identification of critical infrastructure, the potential for parcel level assessments. Are these types of things going to take place, um, in this, uh, revision to the, to the annex four? Another thing, when I looked at the DUDAC contract, um, the task number two, which is, in my opinion, the information gathering and analysis is the smallest component of the total cost of the project. And it just, it's troubling to me to see that the preparation of the document, the administrative and, and, uh, visual aspects of the project receive so much of the cost, whereas visual aspects of the project receive so much of the cost, whereas the actual analysis and and collection of data receives so little of the cost. For instance, only two days are allocated for doing on the ground assessment in the district. It just seems to me that how can you get a very specific detailed analysis of the various different different areas within the town? If you're only going to spend a couple of days on the ground. So I'm sorry for the long-winded question, but I'm really interested in how this CWPP effort will be different and how it will produce a valuable document that will really be one of the third pillars or the third pillar for the effort that's gonna take place in the fire district. Thanks very much.
Nice use of the clock. The I think it's clear from that slide that this effort is definitely different from the initial, I think you're phrasing it as the original boilerplate that went in originally for us. This is especially a more customized effort for us and really is a significant effort of our team to really be part of the CWPP things. The nice at DUDAC is they are a big firm that does much bigger projects than just us. They have a huge amount of experience in this kind of things. So now we're really, their expertise outshines ours in many ways on this. And so they're we're very lucky to have them on board to help bring this kind of expertise to really provide a customized and really useful new report. I'm sure you'll be hearing more about it as we get into the CWPP efforts, which as you see, really go along with the strategic plans. He's gonna stretch out for for a little while more. And this does bleed into our next item. I don't see any other public comments on that item eleven. So let's go ahead and move into item twelve. Which is to approve the First Amendment to the Professional Service Agreement for Environmental Consulting Services with DUDAC Environmental Consultants. This will be both for General Manager Logan and Programs Planning and Grants Manager Rendler to present the report to us. If you guys like to take that.
Yes, thank you, President Spreen. The district with the assistance of County Council adhered to the county procurement process to select DUDAC as a single source vendor who could develop and implement a six complex project tasks for the Los Altos Hills County District, all related to environmental requirements and wildfire preparedness and mitigation. Task one and two, which Eugenia just spoke about, are now completed in accordance with the June two thousand twenty two Agreement for Services. And task four is before you tonight for consideration with the recommendation to improve task four proposal. And this is where I want to make a very, very important point. And that is by putting the six tasks with the same vendor, we get synergy. And synergy is very important as we spent all this time and energy on task one and two, which was ground truthing. It was having DUDAC field scientists out there, going through all of the projects, going through the land that we're looking at to mitigate and to present the I two eighty report on. And so task four, which is writing the CWPP, then picks up the benefit of all that ground truthing and all the ground and field work that was done throughout the district and with I two eighty with DUDAC. So we're already way ahead of the game as we start on task four. And the proposal, the the task for proposal will update the current revised Los Altos Hills County Fire District CWPP Annex Four at a very high level of expertise with best practices standards. With that said, I'd now like to turn over the introduction to Programs Planning and Grant Manager Eugenia Rendler to introduce our experts from DUDAC. And we're very, very pleased to have the opportunity to work with them. Eugenia, I throw you the mic. It's all yours.
Thank you. I just wanted to add two pieces and then I will get to introductions. Some of our ground truthing also comes from Jackson's drones and our contract with them. So that feeds into this very nicely. And we also have the benefit of the mapping and risk analysis from the county effort. Because those two pieces tie together so that we're not having to recreate the wheel on the work that the county has already been looking at on the ground. And DUDAC has worked with FireSafe Council as a project manager in the past. So that relationship also adds value to the smoothness with which we can go back and forth and 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 feed into the county documents. And on that note, I'd like to introduce Sean O'Brien and Scott Eckert. Guys feel like turning those cameras on? I know it's late. Thanks for staying with us. Sean O'Brien is the principal at DUDAC and he's also the project director. Sean and I have worked together on different projects through the years and I'm really excited to continue on the the synergy between the teams that that they have been assigned to us. So thank you. And Scott Eckert is a forester and fire protection planner who has worked on multiple CWPPs, both county size and city size. So lots of experience, twenty years worth of time with DUDAC. That's coming, you know, to bear on our processes. So thank you, gentlemen. And I know you have a couple remarks to bring to the council commission.
Yeah, maybe I'll hop in here, Scott, quickly, and then I can turn it over to you. But just, yeah, I wanted to say thank you, Eugenia, for the very nice introduction and just say that I'm really excited. DUDAC is very excited to support the objectives and the mission, the important objectives and mission of the of the district. I think we've built a foundation of a a great working relationship so far with the I two eighty work. And we're we're looking forward to getting underway on the the CWPP Annex Four update. So I'm just really excited and and appreciate the opportunity to participate in this meeting. Thank you so much. And I'll turn it over to Scott, who's a forester and fire protection planner here at DUDAC and is gonna be a key member of the team.
Thank you, Sean, and thank you, Eugenia, and good evening to everybody. Yeah, I I'm here representing DUDAC's fire planning team. You know, we're a diverse group of fire protection planning and environmental professionals. And we've been working on really dozens and dozens of community wildfire protection plans and wildfire risk mitigation plans throughout the state. So I'll just really echo Sean's comments and say that, you know, we're excited to continue our our work with the district and support the important work that you're doing for for your district. So appreciate it and we're here to answer any questions if you have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do we have any discussion from the commission? Any quite clarifying questions, I should say? Seeing now, let's uh, let's see, let's go ahead and entertain a motion for the approval of this amendment. May I have a motion in second?
Sherlock moves to approve.
PG moves second.
Great, thank you. So this item is now open for discussion. Any more discussion from the commission on this? Seeing none, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, great. Thank you. In that case, we can now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Spreen.
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock.
Yes.
Commissioner PG.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Great, thank you. And thank you, gentlemen, for being here to help with this. Okay, and once again, we have so much information tonight. We are now moving on to item thirteen, just District Hydrants and Related Infrastructure Report. Thirteen A is an update on the Town of Los Altos Hills Annual Pavement Rehabilitation Capital Improvement Project and the replacement of the district-owned fire hydrant gate valves. Let's see, Los Altos Hills County Fire District Engineering Consultant Tarantino, is he here to provide this report?
President Spreen, he's texted me. He is in the middle of another council meeting at this time. So a couple, many of our vendors, a couple of them tonight were double booked and they were, you know, toggling back and forth into the the meeting. So I asked him to provide me bullet points of his remarks and I'll be happy to read them to you in not being available.
Thank you.
Yes, so thank you. Interstate Grading and Pavement completed the adjustment of three fire district-owned gate valves. And F and L or Friar and Loretta had field corrections that needed to be addressed. So Interstate Grading and and Paving anticipates completing the work by October twenty first. And F and L will perform final inspections to verify the installation meets the district's standards. So that's the update. I can, you know, tell you that through the pavement rehabilitation, three of the gate valves needed to be relocated. They're installed, but they're they have some remediation to do to them. And then Friar and Loretta, Jeff Tarantino's staff will go out, inspect them and then give notice back to the district if the invoices are ready to be paid. So that's the end of Jeff Tarantino's report.
Thank you. Appreciate your standing in for him. Any commissioner comments on that? Questions? Great. I'm sure Jay's happy not to answer any detailed questions on that from the commission. Any public comment on that? It's pretty much, it is what it is. Thank you. Again, thank you, Jay, for stepping in. We will now move on to item fourteen. Financial and District Clerk Reports. Fourteen A is an update on the fiscal year two thousand twenty three, twenty four budget development. Budget Manager Morial, please provide the update.
Yes, President Spreen, Vice President Sherlock, and members of the commission. It's good to speak with you again this evening. I'm really excited to speak about the budget process because it's the most opportune time to do so. But we just presented the financial reports this evening for twenty one, twenty two. And I always like to say, there's nothing like looking at your latest financial report to assist you in planning the next few that are coming up. Of course, Corey and I are looking at the current year twenty two, twenty three financials as we plan the twenty three, twenty four budget. In terms of the budget calendar, that is before you in graphic form. This is what it looks like right now. The process has started. The staff budget team is in the midst of coordinating and data gathering right now. That gathering, that means really looking at our historical financial information and having key meetings internally to look at metrics and to plan out the next processes. There will be a first standing committee meeting in the October, November timeframe. We don't have a specific date there, but it will happen late October, early November. If a second standing committee meeting is needed, that would take place in the December, January timeframe. Finance and budget teams will then, between November and January, meet again as a group. And based upon committee input and most financial, most recent financial metrics, then develop the numbers going forward. A final draft of the budget will be coming back to the commission for comment and revision revision. I believe that is January seventeenth of twenty twenty three. And ultimately, the budget will be submitted to the county February third of twenty twenty three. So those are the dates that are before us as we speak. I also, on the next slide, I was also wanted to speak to the the essential, what I call the essential elements or building blocks of the budget besides just the quantitative process. And I see it in this way. There's three main components. There's the strategic alignment, fiscal elements, and then the community aspect of it. And it was really music to my ears tonight to hear Commissioner Warren speak about the strategic plan. Because from my perspective, that is really foundational to building budgets. In the strategy alignment process, we are, we have established a budget team. We have established a budget subcommittee. There will be budget meetings internally. And in that process, we are going through a goal-setting process, much like strategic planning. Given what we know right now, that's in the current chart of services and the current discussions of the strategic plans. These are all elements that we are talking about because our real objective is to match dollars with goals. We're also, of course, going to be coordinating with key stakeholders intergovernmentally. And that would be the county, the town, FireSafe, Fire District, and MidPen. The second element of this is is more internal and that is the fiscal elements. And if you think of a budget, much like layering of a cake, there are different layers of data that go into it. And that is revenue forecasting, looking at our payroll, look at our capital needs. Much discussion on life and safety projects and programs and also looking at our key contract vendors as well. So that that's the fiscal element part of it. And I think the most exciting part is ultimately the community. The public meetings that will take place, the presentations, adoption, adoption of the draft, a budget by the district. Ultimately, the approval and adoption by the county. And then we go into the actual year when we come back to the commission for interim reporting. So that in essence is what we're looking at in terms of dates and elements of the budget process for twenty three, twenty four.
Great, thank you for that report. Let's see, any discussion or questions on that from the commission? I'm really excited to get involved with you guys on this and to enter my part because I know it's gonna be, I'm really excited with this this year's attempt at the budget. It's such a up-leveling of how we've done things. And so glad to have this expertise on board. I see it coming from Joan. Oh, you're muted.
Thank you. Just a quick question on the public meetings. Do we do a meeting outside of the commission meetings on those, on the budgets? Or I don't remember from last year.
Yes, the subcommittee itself will have a public meeting. I'm sure that's what Russ is referring to that.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? That's a good question. Good, great, seeing none. Let's see, any public comment on that? It's good. Not seeing any hands raised. Okay, let's see. Let's move on to item fourteen B, which is adopting the Resolution twenty two, twenty one. Establishing the appropriations limit for the district for fiscal year twenty twenty two to twenty three. Financial Consultant Vargas, can you please present the report on this for us?
Yes, good evening commissioners. So there is a memorandum report that is included in your packet that provides background and information about the appropriation limits. But in short, these limits are established by the Controller Treasurer Department, the County of Santa Clara. And they are computed using a total adjustment factor of multiplying the population factor of Santa Clara County and the inflation factor, which is a change in California per capita, personal income. And this is just allowing the limits of proceeds of taxes that can be spent in any given fiscal year. So this is for the current fiscal year. The amount was established at twenty six million, seven forty four, four thirty two. And that is well above what our estimated budgeted expenditures for the current fiscal year are of thirteen point five million. And so what we're looking for tonight, and this is again, I don't know if I mentioned, it's an annual limit, and we're just looking tonight for the commission to approve the limit that was established.
Thank you very much. Financial Consultant Vargas, any clarifying questions from the commission? Glad everyone knows or understands this is our sort of annual process here. Let's see, I will entertain a motion in that case. We'd like to have their name on this one. Jim, you look like you wanna, you wanna, you want one?
Sure, I move to approve.
Warren seconds.
Great. And this item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? I don't expect any, but I will give everyone that chance. Not seeing any, any public comments on this item. This is fairly standard. Thank you. There's no further discussion. We will vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Spreen.
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock.
Yes.
Commissioner PG.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
The motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item fifteen, which is Commission Member Reports. Item fifteen A is really to inform that two commissioner terms will be expiring on December thirty first of this year. District Clerk Vargas is going to give us a little report on this, I understand?
Correct, yeah, just just a quick summary. So these positions, San Clara County Supervisor Joe Semidion from District Five makes the appointment recommendations, which are then approved by the County Board of Supervisors. The vacancies will be advertised and interested residents of the district are should submit an electronic application to the county office of the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors using the website link. And that is on the actual agenda. So it is posted to the public. So it is posted to the public.
Thanks very much. District Clerk Vargas, any discussion or questions from the commission about this? Not seeing any public comment on this. Again, this is an announcement item. This is kind of the first step in making sure this is all taken care of. Not seeing any. Great, thank you very much. We'll now move on to item fifteen B, future agenda items. This is an opportunity for commissioners to provide reports on any future agenda topics. Are there any comments from the commission? If there are, it would be the absolute first time there has been one, I think. Keeping our streak alive. Thank you very much. Oh, no. Commissioner Tyson.
Every streak should be broken. I want to commend President Spreen on covering so much ground in such a relatively short period of time.
Thank you, Russ. I appreciate the comment. I nine thirty, but so we're getting out here a little bit early, and really, the thing, the credit goes to a lot of people in this Brady Bunch Board. We did a lot of work on a lot of reports, so thank you, everyone, and I hope, I'm sure the staff will be breathing easier and relaxing a little tomorrow. I hope they deserve it. Okay, any other public comments here on this? No. Great. We'll now move on to item fifteen C, the next regular commission meeting is November 15th. It's a notice that the next regular commission meeting is November 15th. That comes up fairly soon, I think, just the way the calendar is. So we'll have to see how that works out, what's on there. I suspect that will be a budgetary one, or what that will be, probably emphasizing budget items and any other items of business, but it will not be report-heavy like this one was today. So it was great to get a lot of this out of the way. Any comments from the commission on that date for that meeting? I hope everyone can be here. Great, and
Sadly, I may miss it. I will be landing early afternoon from overseas. So I will try to make it.
Excellent. Travel is hard to predict these days, so we will expect the unexpected. So, okay, great, thank you. Any public comment on that schedule? Not expecting any, but giving everyone a chance. Great. Okay, we will now move on to item sixteen, adjournment. This concludes the October 18th, 2022 regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. The meeting is adjourned at 9:14 PM. As discussed, the next regular meeting will take place via Zoom on November 15th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Emergency Services Manager BB, please stop the recording.